Yes.
All right. All right, then we're going to call to order the April 8th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. The council did not meet in closed session this evening, so we're going to, we'll proceed to our general administration function agenda. We're conducting this meeting pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N dash 29 dash 20, which permits me to meet via live stream and cable TV access. We have made provisions for the submissions of public comments prior to the meeting through emails to the city clerk, and we have at each meeting received comments in that, in that mode. And as we get to those items, the clerk will identify the comments that we have received. So we'll proceed to the general administration function first. Madam Clerk, did we receive comments under item 1A?
No comments for 1A, only item 3.
Okay, all right, so then we'll go to item 1B. Are there communications or other reports this evening? All right, we have no appointments tonight, so we'll proceed to the consent agenda, which is the minutes from April 1st.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Guerrero and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma that the consent agenda be adopted. So you know, discussion, all those in favor, oh, sorry, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Orozco. Councilmember Orozco, thank you. Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye.
Thank you.
The consent agenda passes 5-0. That brings us to item 3, which is update in actions on the city's COVID-19 response. Turned over to the city manager. I do want to note first that we have, as we're iterating and trying to improve each week, our own performance as the council in the management of the crisis and the emergency operations. We've been, the Mayor Protem and I have been comparing with the city manager about how to make the, these reports as useful to staff as possible, and also as useful to council in terms of our role in policymaking and policy guidance and direction. And so in cooperation with the city manager, we best have, and tried to structure this evening, slightly different from our prior two meetings on the topic. So are, we're not going to be going through 10 different silos of, of actions in order, now that, now that it's clear that the operations, emergency operations center and emergency management is proceeding appropriately based on the resolution the council has passed, rather than the council direct, making specific directions about micro actions each week, which is normally outside of our role. We're a policy body, not a micromanaging agency. We're going to focus on just a couple of, of the overall issues that, and we'll also be looking in the future towards thematic discussions at the council around some of the key policy areas that the council had responsibility for. Obviously, one of those is continue, operational continuance and continuity, and another on budget and finance. But there's several of these topics that, that we've been unable to dive into it really profoundly, because we've been dealing with everything every single week. And we want to make sure that the council has the opportunity to really provide appropriate policy guidance and direction on the council level issues and, and leave to our staff, as we do the rest of the year, when we're not in the emergency, the responsibility for the individual action items. So that's the basic approach, and the city manager is reorganize the written reports. Try to accomplish that, but really it's also on us to try to maintain, to focus on our policy role. So as, so just to sort of conclude, we're not going to be stopping at every topic and asking for council to give, you know, additional feedback and direction and actions. Instead, we'll be hearing the, the bulk of the report together, and at the conclusion, we'll provide additional guidance on the overall policy direction and questions that we might have for future, for future meetings and discussions. So Mayor Protem Sandin, did you want to, Sandin, did you, would you be willing to add anything on, on that topic?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I feel like we've done a good job during this crisis. The city staff has, city manager really has stepped up in this amazing way. And I think when we, when we were, I think, addressing the crisis, we all, it was all hands on deck, and I, it will continue to be. But I do agree that we need to be thinking about things at a, really at a policy level. And I, I do think it will serve the city better in the long run if we're starting to dive in and tackle issues and a, really in a, that affect policy. And as we're continuing to move forward, thinking about how, what we need to do to pivot, and how we may be coming out of this, when, whenever that is, we need to be thinking long-term as well. And that's really on us to be giving some of that longer-term direction.
All right, the only other thing I would add is that when we, when we and the city manager agreed to meet weekly at the beginning of the emergency, I think our expectation was that, that those would be relative, relatively concise check-ins, and that we would not be putting an additional burden on our staff and executive team that are putting in inordinate amounts of time and efforts in order to deal with the crisis and the emergency on a daily basis. And so we would not be asking them to come to weekly meetings that were three or four hours at a time, and instead try to focus. So, so we're also, in addition to trying to make sure that we stay focused on our role as council and perform the role that only we can, that we can provide, but also to, to reduce the amount of, of, of time that we're asking from our leadership team that is also, you know, working all weekends and nights, just trying to, trying to cope with the, with the details and the actions that we've charged them with accomplishing. So with that, Mr. City Manager, we proceed to item 3, which is the update in actions on the response.
I think you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, mayor and council. As you mentioned in that introduction, we are going to do this report a little bit differently than the last couple of weeks. For one, it will be more concise in terms of the presentation. However, we'll point out that the attachment 1, that I'll still be updating a little bit from, is still very comprehensive, does have a running tally of all the actions the city has been undertaking with regard to the COVID-19 emergency. So for tonight, we'll, we'll have one action item, and which is before you, is the amendment to the city's existing moratorium on evictions. We're going to go over that one first, and then we'll go over a couple of other quick updates, and I'll, I'll give you a little preview about what's on the horizon with the next council meetings. And then we'll turn it over to the council for the action item. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Raul Huerta, who y'all know well in our housing division. Raul has been working with Jeff and other staff on this issue from the beginning. As you know, the governor recently issued an additional executive order that was on March 27th that further added more detail to the, the existing governor's order on eviction. So with that, I'll turn it over to Raul, who will walk you through the side of, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So the, the proposed amendments to ordinance 20-5 that we are bringing to you today attempt to reconcile it with Governor Newsom's most recent executive order related to tenant eviction protections. Two specific amendments are being recommended today. First amendment addresses the length of time the tenants have to notify a landlord of their inability to pay rent. The city's ordinance originally required tenants to provide rent notification before the rent was due. This is now contrary to the governor's most recent executive order. So the city's ordinance would be amended to allow tenants up to seven days after the rent is due to provide that notice to, to their landlords. The second amendment addresses the reasons that tenants can provide to delay payment of rent. Again, the city's ordinance originally included specific reasons justifying the delayed rent payments, all of which mirror the governor's executive orders. However, in the recent, most recent executive order, there was also language added that allowed more flexibility to tenants provide additional reasons. So included, but not limited to, language was added. So we would be adding similar language to the ordinance to allow that flexibility to, to our local resident tenants. And in addition to those proposed amendments, staff and the city attorney prepared an analysis and recommendations for tenant protections for accounts to consider. These additional protections were recommended by Legal Services of Hilton, California, because they are not covered by the city's existing ordinance or the governor's executive orders. The analysis also notes some of the benefits of having a local ordinance in addition to the governor's executive orders for tenant protections. And lastly, I do want to note that on April 6th, the California Judicial Council approved an emergency rule that prevents courts from issuing summons on unlawful detainer complaints. This rule is going to be in effect until 90 days after the governor lifts the state of emergency. This judicial rule provides, seems to provide tenant protections against at-fault and no-fault evictions. However, it does allow for some unlawful detainees to proceed when a health and safety argument can't be made. So that concludes my, my brief presentation, but myself and the city attorney are going to be available to answer any, any questions that the council may have.
All right, and we have received, Mr. Huerta made reference to it, but we have received written correspondence from Legal Services of Northern California about this item. It is extensive correspondence, and we're not, we won't be reading, displaying on the screen. This week, we're using a 300-word threshold for display on the screen, and this is significantly in excess of that. But every member of the council has the document, and it is also available to any member of the public wishes to see it as well for, for public viewing. So, but, and Mr. Huerta has already summarized the essence of what the, what the letter is requesting. All right, are there questions for Mr. Huerta about, about the ordinance elements before we get to the remainder of this item? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, I do have a question. Mr. Huerta, on the comments that were submitted to us, there was a question about having an ability to pay after the period of time this expires. And I am interested in seeing if we can add a, we originally had a four-month period, and then it was removed for, for the consideration. And the recommendation by Alisa Meyer is to put in a six-month. I believe other jurisdictions have a period of time so that it's not a drop-dead date after the moratorium ends.
I think I can chime in on that one. I think that, that's very much a policy matter that the council should discuss. If you recall, some of the concerns that were raised for why we settled on not having a timeframe after the ordinance was elapsed had to do with just considerations for property owners and people that would be impacted by that timeframe. So I think that, that's one that we would look to the council for some direction. There are a lot of ways to go on that. As you mentioned, we did have a 120-day term that was basically the same as what Sacramento had done. There are other variations of that, there are other possibilities we could explore, but that's when we need some direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, just on, on this topic, I, I think we still need to, this has been less than two weeks since we did that, or it's been about two weeks since we've adopted that ordinance. And, and we, we determined at that time that we would return to the issue later as we got, as we, as the situation evolved, and we got to see what was happening. Of course, since that time, two, two major things have happened. That is, the governor took action, which had not occurred previously. And the governor has, the governor's demonstrated very strong leadership on this and many other issues on a statewide basis that includes this one, and then the action by the courts. So we're essentially now three, three, us, the governor's office and the courts have all tried to resolve the same exact problem. And the issues that, that were present when we were taking this up before around all the conflicting information and the conflicting rules and the confusion are still present, in fact, more so today. So I'm not opposed necessarily to it, although I don't, I also, you know, we had a long conversation at council before about, you know, the needs of all the parties, including folks who are on fixed incomes, and their only income is their rent to be able to pay their own rent or mortgage in addition to whatever, you know, savings they might have had that's disappearing as a result of the markets and what have you. But there, it's not, it's not, it's not a free matter for them either. And we, there's no indication that, that the emergency is about to end tomorrow in terms of that, that extension. So my personal preference is to, to leave this on the table, that this question, and return to it as we get fur, as we get further through, because we already know between, between the judicial, the judicial council action, even three months after the conclusion of the emergency, there will still be the, the restriction on, on, on evictions during that period for non, for non-payment, in addition to what the protections are already provided in the governor's order. All right, are there comments on this topic at this point? We weren't going to take much of a vote until the, till the conclusion, when we get through the entire report. But yes, Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone. So I think that was, that's sort of answering my question, which was, to what degree is this marrying up to? Because I'm not as familiar as maybe Raul, you are certainly, but the governor's executive order around this, and how, how closely aligned are we, where we, where do we have gaps? So I think the mayor just explained one, that's trying to get resolved in another way. And I'm kind of, I'm supportive if that's going to get resolved somewhere else. But is, is now where we are, seven days after rent is due, is, is that, that we're totally consistent in that way? Are there, are there any other areas that were inconsistent with state policy?
Uh, no. So the two amendments that we are proposing tonight should bring our local ordinance parallel to what the governor's executive orders allow as well, with the protections that they allow.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, if I understood you right, you're just suggesting that the issue of the, I guess, the, when the rent is due back is something that may get resolved in another place that will supersede what we're doing. If we're trying to mirror state policy, that, that, that may get resolved elsewhere. Did I understand that correctly?
I would, yeah, I would say that, so I would say two things about it. One is that, that, you know, I think we determined before, we wanted to, we wanted to see how this was playing out, and also see the consequences of what we had done. And, and that's only been two weeks, so it's not, it's, it's quick. And then second, that this is an area that has drawn lots of attention. Even the federal government's looked at this issue, you know, and so the, the, in some sense, the least cap, the least appropriate agency to be grappling with some of these longer-term issues around rent payments or whatever is us, on the extent to which there are other higher-level agencies that are grappling with that. So I think that, that, there is, there is an urgent need to move immediately today. And it seems reasonable to expect that the longer-term issue, to the extent that there is one, will be, will be taken out by these other agencies at, at some point, just as they have at every other point. Remember, the governor did the second executive order because only three dozen cities in California adopted those ordinances. We were one of them. We were one of the three dozen leaders in California on, on residential and commercial evictions. And we were one of the, we were, we were one of the very first ones on commercial eviction. But for both tenants and commercial tenants, we were out there at the front. That was great, and we helped to, we helped to make it possible for the governor and others to say, yeah, this is, you know, pragmatic people like West Sacramento do this, and so we're moving forward. That doesn't mean that we have to keep on this and, you know, try to, try to noodle around what the governor is doing, which, at least my opinion, the governor's done an excellent job of trying to balance all of these issues while taking aggressive action to protect the most vulnerable in our communities and contain the spread of the virus. And so before we, we rush out to try to get ahead of where the governor is, my, my view is we should be, we should get a sense of what's actually happening in our community that might be different than what the governor is seeing statewide.
I'm sorry, if I could just mention something else. So in terms of aligning our ordinance with the governor's executive orders, and actually, our local ordinance goes above and beyond, because the, the governor's executive orders only seem to apply to residential tenants. Our local ordinance actually applies to both residential and commercial. So it, it actually goes above and beyond what the governor has.
All right, Mr. Laurel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Raul, if you could stay with us for the rest of the presentation, in case there's follow-up questions. But for now, I'm going to go ahead and, like I said, quickly go through an update from last time. I'm going to pick just a couple of topics to, to go a little deeper. But overall, I wanted to start with just the status of where things are in Yolo County in West Sacramento. So you, you probably have been monitoring the data yourself using the Yolo County dashboard that's now available. Gets updated every day at 5 o'clock. And as of today, it's now reported there are 67 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the county. There were 11 reported today. There are 34 cases in West Sacramento. There was only one West Sacramento case reported today. So we're still roughly about half the cases in Yolo County. Unfortunately, there was another death reported day in Yolo County, so that brings the total to three countywide. So that data will continue to update in this report. But one of the things that we wanted to also start doing was give you a better picture of how, not just the city's doing on, on its COVID-19 response, but also just how it's impacting our services and activity in the city. And one way we're going to do that in a simple presentation is through a dashboard that will be in this first section of attachment 1. We'll have the information on COVID cases in the city and county, any available forecasts that are out there, and then other information on further action to prevent transmission and surge. Also, I think it's important for you to get a good idea of what the effect has been on service calls. So we're going to include data on police service calls, fire service calls, public works, calls out to the, the field. Also, the city has a call center at the courtyard right now that's accepting all of the calls regardless of the topic, so we can get you the data on that. Also, information on our social media activity, our, our statistics on different platforms. That's something the Communications Division tracks, just to see how, how things are being received and what, what platforms are more popular than others for different messaging. And then also, the enforcement of the public health order. We have a caseload that we've been managing, and we can include the data on that as well. And this may be some other topics too, like the number of homeless, warehousing, things like that. So we'll, we'll work on that for the next report, hopefully give you a better snapshot and maybe one table. And you'll see that in these reports going forward. I also want to give you a brief preview of the things on the horizon. The mayor alluded to the fact that we, we really want to get more topic-specific as we go forward. So for the next meeting, I would expect to have a discussion on the community benefit fund that has been discussed before at the county level. So I would expect that on April 15th. As a reminder, we are still doing our regular council meetings in between. So we have a regular council meeting on April 22nd. When I say regular, those are the ones that were already on the schedule before we decided to add the weekly meetings to address COVID-19 issues. So the April 22nd meeting, I know, just looking at it today, we do have quite a few consent items and some other potential action items. So we'll try to keep the, that meeting focused on, on regular business. On April 29th, I'm, I'm planning to give you an update on development projects and capital projects. And then the, the topics going forward, we're looking at May 6th as another regular meeting. But we may get into at that point, we may be ready to start talking about finance issues, budget issues, and projections on that. We're doing a lot of work right now to get ready for that, and then trying to do our best with the limited information we have thus far. But also by May 13th, I think we'll be much more in a position to give you a, a good finance update, kind of some updates on, on things we're doing on the personnel side. And also, that will be a good opportunity if the need presents itself, which I anticipated in May, to renew the emergency declaration. If you recall from the last meeting, our municipal code provides that the declaration must be approved, re-approved every 60 days. Right now, I believe it's May 15th that it expires. So the May 13th meeting would be a good opportunity to do that, if not sooner. And then we'll get into other topics going forward as well, much like you, you seen me do in these meetings, those, those 10 different areas. What I've done in this report is I've actually condensed that down to, I think there's six or seven topics. They still cover everything, but some of the topics that were related to one another, I simply put those into one topic instead of breaking them out individually. So you'll see in the tables, the tables look a little bit longer, but they have the same information from before. And also the updates, like I said, those are highlighted in yellow. So if you have questions on any of the updates once I'm finished, we can get into that. But for tonight, what, a couple of updates I really wanted to focus on had to do with a couple of topics that have come up before. One is childcare, the other is options the city can be taking to prepare for quarantining if some of our essential service employees become sick. So first on childcare, this is more of a, a, an update on a lot of things that have been happening since the last meeting. I think I mentioned in the last meeting, we now have a dedicated page on our, on our COVID-19 response website under the topic of childcare resources. The link is in the report. For those of you in the public that are, have access to that document, that's a, that's a helpful link that has all sorts of resources. In that page, there is a list of the daycare and preschool facilities that are still open. Our staff has been doing a really good job of making those contacts, verifying the ones that are open. I think we have it to about 15 sites. They are, many of them are focusing on serving essential workers, and that list is there. But beyond that, we've also created a portal for people to be able to fill out a form, get the information to city staff. And by doing that, we can also help facilitate connection to some of those childcare facilities so that if you are an essential worker and you need that assistance, our, our staff is able to help with that, starting with that form. As I mentioned before, we've also distributed the materials on best practices to the childcare centers that are operating, and also there were resources for parents that we created. We, we do still maintain our ACEs staff in case the need arises. And you heard me say this before, and I'll say it again. Right now, to provide police, fire, public work services, the core city services that are essential right now, we've done that census of our employees and determined that there won't be an effect on, on those services due to school closures and the need for childcare. If that were to change, we do have the availability of, of resources to address that issue if, if needed. We did also this week, just this week, we worked with the Washington Unified School District, who had done a survey of its student households to try to identify of those, of those households, if there were people that were essential workers. And I think what, when we're saying essential workers, we're really talking about first responders. And I go a step further on, rather than healthcare professionals by, at large, we're really focused on hospital workers, people that are in the trenches dealing with treatment of COVID-19 or other, you know, life and safety type of issues at hospitals. And, you know, the, the rest of the work goes on there too. Based on survey data, there were a lot of people that expressed interest in having free childcare. But of them, there, there were some essential workers that were identified. The staff determined that between the resources that were available in the city, there were sufficient spaces that could be connected to those people to provide that childcare service. So now that that's not for free, but we also did identify that the Children's Home Society of California does have a program to offer reimbursement of childcare costs for essential workers right now. So that, that information will also be provided to anyone that is inquiring. So, so that's on the childcare issue. I want to briefly also mention on the topic that came up last meeting about the concern if we had a number of employees that, or any employee that became ill with COVID-19 and had concerns about quarantining at home, because maybe they don't have the means to separate from their family in their home situation. We have done some work on staff here to make connections with a local hotel property, and that's in the works where we can, we can have a relationship with them, where we can make rooms available to those employees if they're needed. Thus far, we haven't had to do that, and this is a model that's been done in other places. So it's not like we're, we're totally making this up, but, but we do have those resources available. So if the need should arise, we'll be prepared for it. And so just want to assure you that we'll be taking care of our employees that have that situation if, if it comes up. So with that, I believe that's the, the main topics. Yes, that's the main topics I wanted to touch on before we go to Q and A. So I'll turn it back to the mayor, and I'll be available for questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Laurel. So we're going to do a round of, one round of Q and A and comments, and then return to the, to the ordinance before us. So we'd like to lead off. And I do want to, again, thank Mayor Protem Sandin for helping, for helping with the city manager to, to optimize our productivity in, in these sessions. We really tried to focus on the core city functions. At the outset of the crisis, I was doing an interview about this earlier today. And at the outset of the, of the crisis, when the federal government had done absolutely nothing, and the state was still ramping up, it was the, the challenges and the fear and the impacts were being felt in the, in the neighborhoods and on the streets and the storefronts of West Sacramento. We were the only We were the only, if we were one of the only uh folks to be able to stand up and help in any way. Um, and so rightly so, uh, the council and our, and our, and our staff and our partners were all just, wha- whatever each of us can do in that moment, we have to step up. And in the intervening weeks, unfortunately, other agencies and other levels of government have have uh come to the, have come to the battle too and uh and at the same time, I think we've also realized and started to recognize some of the, the, the fiscal and other challenges that we're facing. And so uh our focus um in these items and our means is really intended to be on, on our mission as the city. Um, and uh on making sure that we're effective at containing and restraining the virus itself and its transition in our community, protecting the health of our community, protecting the services that we um are responsible for in our city for uh for for the residents that are affected and everyone else, whether that's public safety or or the other kinds of services that Mr. Laurel just described. Um, and and then to, uh, where possible, to be, you know, good partners and collaborators with other agencies, both in the, in the nonprofit sector, in the county and elsewhere. Um, but also to recognize the missions that they have and the sources of funding and resources that they have to do that job as well. So thanks, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Sandin, big, 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 during her experiences in executive um and in the nonprofit sector and it and working a lot with county and other agencies has been very helpful in helping to focus that. All right, so uh, uh, questions or comments from around on this one, uh, Councilmember Guerrero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just um want to commend the work that you've been doing, Aaron, um, on a number of areas here from last week's meeting to this meeting and um just getting, taking care of our employees, providing the quarantine option is, is a great move. Um, I really appreciate that, making sure their, their families are safe, um, while um employees are on the front lines doing the, the work. And for childcare, I did have one quick question on the locations of the childcare that um is being offered. Is it here only in West Sac or is it in other cities?
So the, the fifteen that are mentioned in the report are West Sacramento facilities. Um, so on that link, uh, it'll, it'll actually have the physical address um and phone numbers for, and I believe website links to the extent they have them uh for those facilities. I, I am um told that the, and now I'm blank on the name, the um Childcare Planning Council, I believe it's called, um, on the county level is putting together a comprehensive list of of those facilities available countywide um that would accept uh people from, I believe, anywhere. But the, 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 the work thus far has been focused on facilities in West Sacramento.
Other questions or comments, Councilmember Ledesma?
Yep. Hey, uh, Aaron, it's just a quick note. Thank you for all the good work and just reading through. Uh, A, thanks to uh, uh, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Sandin for working with you, uh, uh, of the format and kind of condensing it down. Um, it's showing that you're, you've taken the, the, Aaron, that you've taken the sort of control and the, and the team is really taking command of kind of being on top of all responses we have around COVID and um so thank you for taking that um step and and for um sort of getting us to a place where we're really focused on the key issues that are going to impact us going forward. I, I did want to just call out a little bit on the childcare too, that I think getting the survey, getting the information from the Washington, with the Washington Unified about kind of where those household, that was really impressive to kind of partner with them, again, showing the partnership with them. So, uh, thank you for that step. And also I know, um, I was looking at, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, the front, um, that you're starting to look through the CARES Act, that you found that the, the, the CBDG fu- funding is coming through, so that was something I'm glad you guys picked up on as well. And uh hopefully, I know there's, um, you're going to be developing kind of what policies are next with that. Um, kind of curious to see where we go next and um kind of make those funds available where they'll be most impactful to the businesses as we get ready for a recovery. So anyway, but good job, Aaron, and to the uh team uh at the city. Really impressed with kind of the city's this kind of y- you're on top of everything, so thank you.
Um, thank you. I, I do want to just make one clarification. Uh, we can't take a lot of credit for the survey. Um, S- Swoody's Circle initiated that um sort of on their own, but with our knowledge. Uh, but the data that the survey produced, we did work with them, our staff today uh to, to quickly determine, you know, what, what the, what the need really was for essential workers. Um, so it was useful information. We were able to determine, at least with the availability we have, uh, that need should be able to be met. Um, now, on CDBG, I'll just mention quickly, we will be bringing back. Um, there is a requirement that you, you uh deploy the funds, so there'll be a public hearing process for that. Uh, much like other CDBG funds, I know the economic development housing division or department is uh uh working on that right now, so.
Uh, Councilmembers Orozco. Mayor Pro Tim Sandin. All right, uh, yeah, I want to, uh, thanks, Aaron, for, and and to the whole team. I, 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 the, I, I know I don't need to say this, but the fact that we're not going to meet for three hours doesn't mean that we're not intensely um interested in all the work that's happening. Um, and in fact, as Councilmember Ledesma just said, um, it's just a really strong vote of confidence in every level of the organization, um, and the both the forward thinking, uh, the paying attention to what's happening in real time that, that people are experiencing and then executing, you know, to just, and and also tuning out the, the chaos and the noise in order to focus and get things done, uh, which is quintessentially West Sacramento. Um, and and with the heart that West Sacramento always has, so it's, so for all the um executive team members and staff that are either um on the, you know, uh, on this meeting right now or or may, may for whatever reason, watch it later, uh, thank you. Um, this is a, you know, the council, I, I know in the community is all very appreciative of the, of the, of the work that you're doing and the quality and the commitment that's, that's engaged. Um, I, I, I don't, it's, it's in the report, but it would be uh an oversight to, to, to omit at the council that the you know, that the governor was here, the governor uh in, in making his um, you know, i- his daily announcements and press conference, press briefings and this, and on the day that he wanted to focus on Project Room Key, uh, one of his signature initiative around um helping uh counties and communities and cities uh to place uh, uh homeless individuals who are the most at risk um in uh motel rooms and hotel rooms uh during the, during the, at least during the crisis. Um, he chose to come here, um, and that's because of the very strong partnership between Yolo County and the city of West Sacramento, both in terms of the implementation already um on this, you know, the, the total rooms that he announced being, um, you know, being secured under Project Room Key statewide, you know, that a, a large number of those were in West Sacramento and a large number of the people being served were were West Sacramentoans um who are experiencing homelessness. And that's a a, a strong testament to uh to the, to the work that's been done um in, in, in total, but also to our team and and especially to that partnership with Yolo County that didn't just pop up yesterday in order to do this, but then we've been working closely with them on bridge to housing and on so many other issues uh with Supervisor Riegus and his colleagues uh for many, many years and and uh the proof of that is in that, in that outcome. And so having the governor here, even though he, uh, in order to protect uh, protect the, the hotel from not being overrun with, with demand, uh, didn't uh, didn't identify its location, we all knew uh where it was and many of our residents did as well. It was a moment of, of pride. The second thing I've noticed that, that I, I, we've been in con- in conversations with the um Speaker Pelosi's office about um, the fourth bill, uh, uh, the, the fourth rescue bill that the House is currently working on. Um, and there, they, she, she has indicated, and I had an extensive conversation with Congressman Mott Sui about this as well, um, that they do intend to include significant resources more than in the first, in the, in the first package and the, and resources that would be coming directly to cities. Um, and not only the, the thirty five biggest cities in the country as first, uh, as the first package did. Um, that still needs the approval of, well, first of the House, but then of the Senate and the President as well. Um, but that's a strong, um, a strong indicator about, about uh at least the prospects for, for, for achieving some some uh local relief. And then as Aaron said at the beginning, I actually, you know, the, you know, this is a human crisis. It's a human emergency. And it's not, it's not lightning, uh, you know, setting trees on fire. It's, it's real, it's people in our community that are that are suffering, that are worried, that are scared, that are grappling with all sorts of dislocation and disruption and unemployment and family issues and everything imaginable all at once. And uh, and to see West Sacramentoans struggle breaks all of our hearts, um, but to see West Sacramentoans stand up and to support one another in every possible way um with a smile, with support, with a warm meal, uh, with the, you know, with some volunteering at the food bank, uh, with some, some, you know, or uh Councilmember Orozco, uh, both distinguished and embarrassed herself in a jungle outfit to read to, to read to children. Uh, you know, everyone in the community is doing something and um, it's no surprise because it's West Sacramento, uh, but it is, it is, um, it is, it is so heartwarming. And I know we're, we're all proud to serve a community um that, that uh, that sees hope and sees the best and is willing to do the work in order to make it happen and that cares for one another. Uh, and, and the, uh, most of the projections show the peak, um, the peak is coming pretty soon, that we, you know, over the next couple of weeks are the most critical period. Um, uh, because of the incubation period of the virus and everything else, the next couple of weeks are the most critical. Uh, and we have, uh, you know, I, I know we're, you know, as, as we're uh, uh, our teams are out there and folks are reporting on compliance with the health orders. Um, it's, it's absolutely critical that we all continue to uh stay home, to stay home even more, um, to follow every possible social distance um requirement, maybe double it. Thanks again to, to, the communication staff for their, their little video today to explain social distance, what sixteen means and bike dog rowlers are in uh in, and other West Sac, uh, West Sac goats or other metrics. Um, yeah, but the, but it's so important that we follow those. And then now, if you absolutely must go out uh, uh, to, to the supermarket where social distancing is being enforced, but it's also still a challenge to please wear, you know, wear a non, uh, a non, uh, kind of mask um at that period, we can do this. We've come this far already in the last couple of weeks. It's been a challenge. It's been hard. It will still be hard even when we're out of this. Um, but we have to get out of it first, and that requires that we all continue to to comply with and to encourage and to support others and complying with the health orders and doing what it takes to be safe. Um, thanks to, to staff again, and thanks to uh my colleagues on the council, but most of all, thanks to uh, to our, to our, our neighbors in the community who are really stepping up and doing the right thing and doing the right thing for each other. So with that, uh, we have the ordinance then before us, the recommendation on that. Is there a motion on the ordinance? Mr. Mayor? Or it's been moved by Councilmember Guerrero?
And I will second.
Seconded by Councilmember Ledesma. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor Cabaldin.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, there are public comments ready for display.
Oh, okay, I, I, okay, I, I, I knew we had the legal services one, let's, let's see those. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so let me just ask before we move to the, I haven't seen the, the comments, is there any other uh question or debate on this one? All right then, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tim Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Aye. All right, so that, that motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, council calendar. Assistant City Manager Berlin?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, the only change to the calendar is, um, you'll note that the Waseafka meeting, which was scheduled for April sixteenth um, is canceled and there'll be a special meeting on April twenty third at nine o'clock, and they're getting that set up to do a teleconference meeting, um, but that's in the works right now. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, any questions on the calendar? Uh, City Manager reports?
No other reports tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laurel. Uh, City Attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction from members of the council. We have no future agenda requests, uh, so uh, I invite the motion to adjourn. Like to um ask that we, as we adjourn, that we do so tonight in memory of uh two individuals, two longtime city employees that have left, left an important mark, both on the art organization, but on the city as a whole. Uh, first is uh John Whitmer, who was a longtime Public Works uh employee who passed after a long health battle. Um, and John joined the city in two thousand and three as a uh water treatment plant mechanic uh and served in that capacity for seventeen years. Um, a key member of the, of the team uh working on, on innumerable projects in water treatment and distribution, stormwater conveyance, sewage collection, was an encyclopedia of knowledge and a mentorship for others. Um, and uh, we certainly, I mean, during this period, the, the essential functions that Public Works provides um in our community have never been more, more clear. Um, and uh, and, and John always exemplified that, would happily jump into the, to, uh, to support everyone else in the organization and residents in the community. And then second, our, our former Director of Community Development, Steve Patek, um, who was the uh, the guiding force behind so much of our, our, our community development and planning work uh during the formative uh era of the city, served as Planning Director for, for uh many years. Uh, uh, and helped to shape uh Southport and virtually every other major project in the city along the way. Um, was a resident here as well and also recently, uh, recently passed. Um, so with that, I'd like to invite a motion to adjourn.
The mood.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Orozco and uh seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Sandin that we adjourn and that we do so in honor of John Whitmer and Steve Patek. All those, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Um, Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Aye. Motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
Yeah.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Aye.
Night.